...of board members is present, this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Good evening to everybody. We just, uh, just wanted to, uh, say congratulations to our, uh, board members who were re-elected to another four-year term, so Mr. Cargill. Mr. Campos and Ms. Cole.
Woo!
So, congratulations to the three of you. Tonight, the Board of Trustees is meeting in a called work session board meeting. The Board welcomes and appreciates com- comments and input from the community. Open forum is provided at each meeting to allow the public to address the Board. There will be two open forums tonight. Open forum number one is to hear requests regarding agenda items only. Open forum number two is to hear requests or make comments regarding non-agenda items and will be heard at the end of the meeting. Those addressing the Board are asked to limit their comments to three minutes per meeting. The speaker should identify his or her name, group affiliation if any, and make a brief presentation with an identified solution if one is sought. Remarks should be addressed to the Board as a whole. Oral presentations may not include charges against any employee or board member by name. It is my responsibility to determine if the person addressing the Board has attempted to resolve a concern informally or through the district's complaint policies. If not, the speaker will be directed to follow the appropriate policy. The Board requests that all presentations be made in a courteous, respectful, and professional manner and asks that speakers monitor their own behavior. If you wish to speak during one of the open forums, please fill out one of the cards located on the table in the entry hall. Any comments?
No additional comments tonight.
Alright, no clarifications?
No clarifications.
Alright, we're ready for open forum number one. Any cards, Ms. Holder? Okay. Then at this time, we will adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Texas Open Means Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The Board will adjourn to closed session pursuant to sections 551.071 to 551.074.[117.31]
At this time, the board is reconvening into open session. We hear item six point zero one, consider approval of principal for Ullis Junior High. I'll accept a motion.
I move that the board approve the appointment of Anne Marie Garcia as the principal at Ullis Junior High School.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the board to approve the appointment of Anne Marie Garcia as principal of Ullis Junior High School as submitted. Please vote.
The first one always takes the longest.
That motion passes. Anne Marie, we always like to give new principals or people changing positions who come to the board an opportunity to introduce anybody you have tonight.
I have my amazing family here, my husband, my bonus son who is a 2020 LD Bell graduate, my daughter who will be entering Central Junior High, and my amazing best friend and her family who are to support me tonight.
All right, congratulations. All right, we are down to reports and presentations, communities and schools update. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you President Romero and Dr. Harrington and Board of Trustees for having us here with you tonight. Just because there are several of us does not mean we're planning to be thrice as long, so don't worry. I wanted to just quickly introduce my colleagues who are gonna assist tonight in giving y'all a snapshot of what we've been up to over the last year in serving HEB ISD students and families. And then we will also welcome up Principal Liesel James to share a few words as well. So first, I want to introduce Morgan Erie, she's our Director of Impact and Evaluation, and Lauren Sly, our Chief Programs Officer. And I will stick around just in case there's any questions after.
Good evening. So going on to our next slide, I will try not to bore y'all to death with data. And this is a snapshot of last year's outcome. So we had 12 program managers doing case management, serving 902 students. We improved in our academics by 89%, 84% in attendance, 95% in behavior, and had 100% improvement on, or 100% graduation rate and student school rate. Looking at the types of services that case management provides, so school-wide, these are in collaboration with counselors for like Red Ribbon Week. Or, that one always gets me. And then, or with the Nurse for Save a Smile, those would be our Tier One services. Small groups are gonna be Tier Two, so those are the students that we case manage and do for a common need. So anger management, social skills, things like that. And then Tier Three are those individual services. So those are those case management services in the pie chart. And then we had four mental health counselors serving 148 students, and they had 85% progress towards their clinical goals. So they set two clinical goals and are scaling those every couple of sessions to see improvement. And for those students who were duly enrolled, who had case management and mental health, we saw 91% improvement in academics and 87% improvement towards their clinical goals. Okay, for this year, case management, we have 11 case managers, program managers, and they have served 879 students to date. And 61 crisis interventions services. And then clinical, we have two mental health counselors with 74 students served and 19 risk assessments. This is a long list of all the things that we have done so far this year. But it ranges anywhere from FASPA nights to the Amon Carter Museum School Field Trip, to Save a Smile, to Financial Literacy, Southwest Airlines Career Fair. So really covering the gamut of different services that we are reaching students with.
All right, and then real quickly, we are going to hear from Ms. Liesel James, one of the principals at the schools we serve, Midway Park Elementary. And she has one of our most fantastic social workers, Ms. Julie Swayze, who's been with us for 15 years.
Thank you. Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity. So in HEB, we believe in the power of community, and our district is fortunate to be located within cities who believe in the work of our schools. With community at the forefront, it just seems natural that we would look to partner with an organization who works to empower students and families. By partnering with our school district, the communities and schools organization truly makes us stronger together. At Midway Park, we currently serve 617 students in pre-K through six. Of these 617 students, 83% are economically disadvantaged, and we have 41% mobility rate for the year. We have been fortunate to have our communities and school social worker Julie Swayze for over five years now, and before her, we have had others. Mrs. Swayze plays a vital role on our campus by facilitating small groups with a focus on friendship and kindness. Additionally, she provides individual guidance to students who need support. She assists teachers in parent conferences and phone calls home when needed. And she supports the organization and delivery of food assistance for our families over the weekend or holiday break. This food, as you know, is so important for many of our families who struggle with food security and consistency. Mrs. Swayze also partners with our school counselor, Jancy Crook. Together, she and Mrs. Crook coordinate resources to assist students with school supplies, assistance with Christmas through our Six Stones Night of Hope, plan all school events like Career Day or Internet Safety. And additionally, these two work to communicate with parents through monthly newsletters, parent training videos, and directing them to the appropriate channels when assistance is needed. The impact and imprint of CIS on Midway Park is enormous. By serving our students and families, CIS helps us achieve district goals like student achievement, safe and healthy nurturing schools, and enduring relationships with our stakeholders. Because of CIS, our Midway Park students are receiving resources to help them be successful in school and ultimately in life. CIS works to remove deficits for our kids that our kids come with, and instead focuses on the assets of our students. Thank you to our HEB ISD School Board and Dr. Harrington for continuing to see the value of the communities and schools' organization and its partnership with our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. I know, speaking to Julie numerous years, she absolutely loves her campus, and that is at the heart of the relationship with the principal. So we know the work that y'all do is so close as well. Real briefly, before we just open up if there's any questions, I wanted to give one more note. Again, I may have spoken with some of you before, but I am a proud LD Bell graduate as well. I was an IB student. I love this district. I have family members who are currently here. I have one family member in particular who was supposed to go to Trinity and is now going to Bell, so I'm just gonna put that out there. Very proud of this district and so happy to be serving it in this capacity now and the work that we do. And just being able to get into all the nooks and crannies of our students as a vast need in HEB, so we are happy to be able to fill those. We also wanted to open up, I wanted to say, I'm also very honored this year with one of my former teachers, Mr. John Atkins, has asked me to give the graduation speech at Keys. So I will be doing that on the 26th of this month. So again, happy to serve HEB.
We all look forward to that graduation.
Yes.
I wanna be rushing back trying my best to be there.
Oh, well. Just come on in, they'll be glad you're there. But are there any questions that we can answer for y'all tonight?
The board have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank y'all for choosing Keys High School and Mr. Atkins and his team for speaking for the luncheon. It's one of the best I've ever been to, and I'm not just saying that because I love Keys, but it really was very powerful too to hear, is it Mr. Saldana?
Ray.
To hear his story. That was very powerful to know where he came from and where he has grown into that position. But it was, it was a wonderful luncheon. It was amazing.
Well, thank you. Thank you all again very much for our partnership, and we look forward to reporting to y'all next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any questions on disbursements for the month of April 2023? All right, seven point zero three, Architects Update, Mr. Williams and Ms. Moses.
I will be brief. I just want to introduce to you somebody you already know, Ms. Aubrey Moses. Oh, I know, she got married. So that's really only why I'm here, in case you just didn't know who this was. So Aubrey's gonna bring to you an update on the Bell Manor rebuild for the new Bell Manor when we rebuild it.
Thank you, good evening. Just, I think y'all are aware, we've been doing some feasibility studies for a few different projects in the district. One of them being replacing Bell Manor Elementary. So just want to give you just a quick update on where we are in that process. So just current site plan, what we're, what we're looking at doing is replacing Bell Manor on the site of FEW where Keys and DAAP and other functions currently are. So this is to give you the context, adjacent to Central Junior High, and then you've got the soccer fields to the south. And then on this new site plan, this is what it could look like. We did some different studies using both the Veridian prototype and then the modified prototype that we've used at Oakwood Terrace, yeah, Oakwood Terrace and Bel Air. And it is the Oakwood Terrace prototype that fits best on this site. So that's how we're gonna be moving forward at this point with a few updates to meet the needs specifically of this campus. And one of those, let me see, here's the cursor. So the two-story academic wing is on the south side here along Raider Drive. And we've shifted that south compared to the previous iterations. And we've added this pod in here to add four additional, three additional sped classrooms and a motor lab. And the current campus serves those, those programs and has those additional classrooms, so we want to make sure that they have a place in this new campus as well. And we will be adding a little bit of additional flexibility in those first two pods within the academic wing, adding a few more restrooms within those classrooms. So there's, if there's ever any overflow for either sped or pre-K, there's that flexibility for them to grow and morph as well. The other thing that this allowed us to do by putting sped here at the center of the campus is it created this little green space outside so that there can be a sped play area with equipment just for, just for them. The other change that we're doing compared to the previous two options, just the way this is oriented on the site. At Oakwood Terrace and at Bel Air, the front entrance is over here on the right side. And you can see how narrow this is. There's not really an opportunity to do parking or really create that front entrance feel. So right now, we're proposing to flip the administration and the library at these, at this campus. So the administration is over here on the corner, and then the library is this piece that sticks out towards the top. And so the front entrance would be facing Pipeline in the current concept. Just as with all of the other campuses that we've done, we will look at the neighborhood context. We've already had conversations with the campus and just understand that it's that really family cultural feel that they have at that campus. And we'll take those things into, in a place when we start looking at building exterior, interior materials, how we can just give it a little bit of a unique feel and still achieve the equality that you have across all your, all your new campuses.
So can you just briefly walk us through how the drop-off lane works in, on this drawing?
So we haven't had thorough conversations. We've, we've met with, Josh and I have met with Renee and Darla and the principal and talked through some of those things, but not in great detail yet. But we see it being a couple of different options. Primarily, your parent loop would be here in the back, and that is similar to how the two recent ones have been. So there would be the option to come off of Pipeline and get a good amount of queuing through there. Or there would be the option to come in off of, did I say Pipeline over here? I meant Raider. Come off of Pipeline up here and down through here and get a good amount of queuing. So there's still those options that can be considered, and then the bus loop would be across the front of the school.
Yeah, the thing to keep in mind is that currently off of Pipeline, you're not allowed to turn left into Central. And so I don't know whether or not that would remain the same here. And that this intersection here on Raider and Pipeline is odd.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we have not had any conversations with the city yet. This is just an early concept. Yeah. So this is just our starting point. Just wanted to share that update with y'all. So the, the hundred spots here at the back of the campus and the 40 up top, that's the equivalent to the other elementary schools. The additional parking down here supports the track, Central Junior High Track Meets and the soccer fields to the south. This is an existing parking lot.
Yeah, it's full in the fall.
Yeah. I think we cut off one corner of it and added it back to the other corner or something like that in this new layout. So that's why it looks new, but the vast majority of that is existing. And then this lot over here between the campuses is existing as well. And I think it serves, currently it serves both of those campuses if I remember correctly.
And something we've never talked about before when we're looking at new drawings is fencing, but we need to be thinking about that now, so.
Yes, that has definitely been on the list and things that we will be looking at.
Aubrey, does the playground rectangle there include traditional playground and pre-K playground?
Yeah, so the space here on the south, south end includes playground for all ages, including the additional pre-K playground and a hard court. So that is equivalent to what has been put in at all of the recent elementary schools.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Aubrey.
Thanks.
All right, report on employment resignations and retirements. Any questions? Dual language update?
Good evening. I am not Ms. Butler. But I play her on TV. No, I, Ms. Butler has absolutely no voice at this point, so we thought you might enjoy the presentation a little better if it came with audio. But she will absolutely get back to you if there are any questions that you have this evening that I cannot answer and you need her greater expertise in them. We will get that information back to you. But I've been along her side as she's been working on these plans, so I'm gonna deliver to you what she had prepared for this evening. So this is a look at our one-way dual-language framework that we're looking at moving, that we will be moving to next year. So tonight, we're going to include, hopefully making sure we all have the same understanding of what is dual language, the research behind it, the vision and model that we have for our program, how we truly build and develop a multilingual how we truly build and develop a multilingual perspective, and the pedagogy for this program. Lots of vocabulary on this slide, many of which we've used previously. But just as a reminder, as we make this shift, we will be shifting some of our vocabulary. So one-way dual-language program is highlighted there for you. That is what our new program model will be. But you will also hear talk of a two-way dual language, so that is also defined for you. L1 and L2, first language and second language, the language they start with and the language that we are trying to acquire. So what is dual language? Well, throughout this presentation, this same graphic is represented a few times because we're really gonna make sure everybody understands these three pillars. We want bilingualism and bili literacy. So that includes both your receptive and expressive language. Can I listen and speak? Can I read it and write it in both languages? Grade-level academic achievement, because these students are performing regardless of which of the two languages they're operating in. They need to be at grade-level academic achievement. And sociocultural competence, that we're really valuing both cultures as we're working through this program. So here are some additional clarification. So two-way, you will hear discussed, that would serve both emerging bilingual and students that already are native English speakers. One-way mainly serves our emerging bilinguals. The goals are the same as the pillars that we just spoke to. The program design, it's gonna have early literacy in that first language, but also language-to-instruction and this cross-linguistic connections in all the areas. If my instruction is in Spanish, I'm gonna bridge it over to English. If the instruction for that particular part of the day was in English, I'm gonna bridge it back to Spanish. We, so that can be confusing. We talk about two-way. We are moving the language in two ways. One-way and two-way has to do with the native language of the students in the classroom, and they will all come from one language point. These will all be our native Spanish speakers in this program. It's considered additive because really, we're not trying to take in our current late-exit bilingual program as they move through, it's more and more English and less and less Spanish. The ultimate goal in this is to get to 50/50, where I'm, so I'm preserving that L1 and adding the L2. But there are different models that you'll see in the research for dual language, where students begin, now, the ultimate goal is 50/50 by the time they reach upper grades, but where do you start in the younger grades? 90/10, 80/20, or immediately at the 50/50%? So we're gonna share a little with you. We are looking at the one-way program. So why? Why do we need to transition from our bilingual program? Our students are very successful in our late-exit. Well, TEA is incentivizing districts to move to a dual-language program. And so we are going to move our pre-K and Kender for next year to dual language, and then we will continue to roll that cohort up, adding pieces for them. But it begs the question, well, why would it be incentivized? Well, the research shows us over and over again that the most effective program for our bilingual students is a dual-language program. So we're gonna look just a little bit at the research. This is a visual. There are so many ways you can approach our emerging bilingual students, whether it is the two-way, the one-way, we have the late-exit, pull-out. So you'll see around first grade, all of the programs start with about the same level of effectiveness. But in this longitudinal study, you will see certainly a separation by grade five in the performance. You see that red and the green, the two-way and the one-way dual really start spreading out from the others. And really, it's that longer-term impact. Once I get beyond that, the fact that I have valued both languages and continue to support them because there's a lot of things we know about a bilingual brain and the contributions and the positive impact beyond just language acquisition. So we do know from research that students in dual language achieve higher academic achievement than their counterparts in the monolingual English curriculum classes. Most dual-language students in these studies scored as much as a grade level ahead of those monolingual peers. And teaching ESL through the content instead of, oh, let's pull you out over here and this is where we concentrate on your English skills, is going to be much more effective if we're doing it through the content. There are many advantages listed for you here just to highlight, because they're not all about language. But a bilingual brain that is activating all those pathways is gonna show greater creativity, problem-solving, critical thinking, the higher academic performance, an increase in economic competitiveness. This is gonna be great for our students when we look at what, you know, we're not pushing them from their native language to graduate high school speaking only English. We are valuing that bilingual, biliterate student, which will make them more competitive when they enter the job market. Research also has indicated a delay in certain brain diseases because there are connections being made there and work in the brain that is different. And increased cognitive advantages. So lots and lots of things that are advantages for our students. It's not just that you leave the program being able to converse in two languages. So a little compare and contrast, because there are many things about when you just look at the model that would be like, isn't that what we were already doing, especially in our younger grades? But a difference, and I loved that Ms. James said in her presentation, we were talking about reaching students. She said, "We sometimes look at their deficits and we need to look at their assets." Well, the way that we have approached our bilingual education, it's a subtractive model. We are subtracting the Spanish out of their instruction and replacing it with English. So we're giving the message that English is valued over that Spanish. And our goal is, hey, let's get you out of speaking Spanish and into the English program fully. So that view is that same mindset that emergent bilinguals are, can be considered as having a deficit. You don't have enough English. That's a problem. Instead of in a dual language, it's an additive. We're gonna keep the Spanish you have, and let's bring the English alongside it. And that that goal is, we're not trying to replace the Spanish with English. We're trying to bring them into a 50/50 equal footing, so that we're valuing bilingualism for the Spanish just as much as the English. And so again, you'll see this bullet, those pillars. We're promoting bilingual, bili literacy and that grade-level achievement and multicultural competence because we're really looking at what an emerging, emergent bilingual brings is asset-based. There is so much potential there. So our program vision, again, a reminder of the pillars and how this will help us celebrate and respect and appreciate our language diversity rather than marginalizing those students. So the program vision that the department has adopted very much echoes those pillars. Again, you'll see all three elements of the pillars. So what is our program model going to look like? I mentioned early on, there are really three models. By the time they're done in upper grades, we are 50/50. But where do we start in pre-K and Kender? Because we could start with, let's go ahead and stay 90% of the time in Spanish. That's what many of our students are coming with, and we'll add in a little bit of English or 80/20, or could jump all the way to 50/50 to begin our program in pre-K and Kender. We have selected the 80/20 model because there are many elements that do model what we're currently doing in our bilingual classrooms in these early grades that are similar to the 80/20 with additional components and some restructuring of certain elements. So here is moving across the elementary grades. You see that instead of continuing to step down those green bars and have more English and less Spanish, we start with more Spanish, but the goal is to have that 50/50 split. So when we look at the time that's going to be spent, their instructional day, I said, "We're gonna start with the 80/20." So you see on both the pre-K and the Kender roll, 80% of the instruction is happening in Spanish and 20% in English, and you can see the content that's going to be taught there. Then that middle column is the bridge that I mentioned, because it's not just, here's my Spanish instruction that sits over here and here's English over here. There is a back and forth. So that's the new part. That we, for every lesson that we're doing, what's the bridge? How are we helping students connect? I'm sorry, for every unit. It may not be every single day of every lesson, but in every unit, there will be bridges back and forth. If the instruction was in Spanish, we're gonna help you bridge that to English using the cognates, using total physical response. This would be my wheelhouse, because you know how much I talk with my hands. And that is what we do with students, to help them understand it's a total physical response. I'm communicating using my whole body, not just my words. And so that is a big part of the bridge as well. And then as we move on up, you see the actual, the bridging back and forth. If the instruction was in Spanish, let's bridge it to English. If it was in English, let's bridge it back to Spanish, instead of that pushing everything to English. So how does this help us develop this multilingual perspective? For example, if we had asked students to take a color test, we gave them colors, and let's say that a student responded that, I see rojo, orange, azul, morado, pink, and green. If I was grading them in English, they missed half the questions on the left side. If I was grading them in Spanish, they missed half the questions. But really, this student was activating both languages and was able to name all of them. They got all of them correct in one language or the other. And if we're valuing the English and Spanish just as much, then we've really got a strong student. If I had just scored them on how well is their English, that's that deficit model. They don't have enough English to name those colors, instead of saying, hey, they have words. How do I help them bridge these words to the corresponding words? So bili literacy pedagogy, we really need to look at this multilingual perspective. And that is a little bit of a shift, and that we need to be able to, the teacher will stay in the target language as defined. I mean, if it's 80 and 20, the teacher's not slipping back and forth and back and forth. If they're an 80/20 grade, 80% of the time in one language. But when a student responds, if it's the 80% of instruction that I'm offering in Spanish and a student responds to me correctly in English, it's not a, no, 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 no. Okay, we need to accept that. So it's letting the students flip back and forth between those languages, even while the teacher stays in the target language, because we know that model will move all of our students in that direction. So a little bit about the program pedagogy. These are things that you would see in our classrooms, cooperative activities, because they're gonna learn from each other. The cross-linguistic connections, the bridges that I had mentioned, the cognates. There are many elements in English and Spanish that echo each other. And it's like, oh, wait, that word sounds like the one that I know. I can connect to that. The trans-language is a fancy way of saying what I was just talking about with the colors. Let them use their entire linguistic repertoire. How cool that they're bringing pieces from two different languages. Let them do that. But we'll continue with the language acquisition so that they grow in both of those. And graphic organizers, other tools that will help students. These are all research-based elements that we need to include in a dual-language program. That will lead to our improved bili literacy instruction and make sure that our students have achieved bilingualism and bili literacy, grade-level academic achievement, and sociocultural competence. Questions that I can try to answer, that I can record for Ms. Butler?
Dr. Norgard?
Yes.
This is, where is this going to initially roll out on? All campuses or certain?
All three bilingual campuses, because this is a one-way program. So we're only targeting students that would have been our EB students that would be in bilingual services. So pre-K and Kender for next year.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
I do, just because the chart showed the two-way was at the top and the one-way was the second best. Yeah, that's why we chose to do the one-way over the two-way.
Okay, so two, two-way changes the structure of what students are actually sitting in the class, because that would be a combination of our students that are currently served in a bilingual program and our English-speaking students that would be interested in that program. And right now, we have our Spanish immersion program that's already established and serves. It's really a one-way for a different type of learner, so.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Just another follow-up question. Is there any teacher changes or just?
We do have some, not because we're moving to this program, but we do have, you know, our typical turnover. So there may be a new teacher. Enry is not here, but I'm actually not sure. I don't think in pre-K or Kender that we do for next year, the two grades that are rolling this out.
So what are we doing, Holly, what are we doing to help them prepare for this change?
That is a great question. Thank you. We have been having a series of meetings all year with the instructional leaders of those campuses, with principals and content coordinators on this front side, preparing the curriculum. What do those bridges look like? Then, starting in April, we've had some trainings that are bringing on some additional trainings that we've had, and the teachers are participating May 10th and 11th. What is that? This week. May 10th and 11th, we are pulling the teachers that will be teaching these classes next year so that they can also have some additional training. Plus, we'll have ongoing support for them in the summer, because right now, they're trying to finish out their year. But we're laying the groundwork for them and rolling out this new curriculum. We have additional support in the ESL department because all of these bridging lessons and how to help the teachers move back and forth. So we are providing those bridges for them instead of the teachers needing to come up with all those bridges on their own. Since we have a managed curriculum, that's being written into the curriculum to support our teachers.
Are there emerging bilingual students who are not at these three schools?
Absolutely.
Yes. So if this is the best program for them, are they, are they being given the option to make a transfer to see if this is something that would work best for them?
Yes, the transfer would work very much as it does now, because when you say emerging bilingual, we have a lot of emerging bilingual that speak a language other than Spanish. So this, this would be.
Emerging bilingual, Spanish.
Right. So, but we do have some. When students first enroll and they complete that home language survey, if it's not English, English, you know, what does the child speak most often and spoken at home, then we automatically, they have language testing. And depending on where they fall on that language testing, the parents are presented with the option of, here's our bilingual program if they're not at one of those schools to transfer. Some deny bilingual and say, we'd rather stay on our home campus and receive ESL services. But it will follow that same process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Holly.
All right.
Next is 7.06 Elementary Summer School Update by Ms. Clark.
Good evening. So we promised you we would come back and share what we're going to do in elementary summer school this year, re-dub Summer Enrichment. So I'm here to talk about that this evening with you. So as you'll remember, based on our studies of summer school, the way we've been doing it, it was not as effective as we had hoped, and so we decided to move in a different direction. So rather than doing a TEACs remediation approach, we're going to have students participate in enrichment. So they will go to PE every day, alternate days of music and art. They'll have STEM every day. Kindergarten through second graders will have library time. Third through fifth grade will have reading every day. And then they will participate in teacher-developed exploration courses. So I'm gonna explain that a little more. Here's a sample schedule. And this is a half-day program, and as a reminder, it's June 5th to June 29th, and we will not meet on June 19th for the federal holiday, and so that leaves 15 days, I believe it is. So a little bit about the exploration courses. So the teachers will teach thematic units designed to accelerate student learning and transfer knowledge across discipline, disciplines. And these were, these units were created in consultation with our curriculum coordinators, and they're designed around the influences shown by John Hattie's research to accelerate student achievement. And we talked about this a little bit back in the spring, but just to remind you about that. And the following influences will be the ones in K through 2. Creativity, integrated curriculum, play, science conceptual change, and STEM programs. So one of the units will be reduce, reuse, recycle, that's a mouthful, in kindergarten through second, where students will use critical thinking, math, science, and English, language arts, and reading skills as they experiment, plan, develop, and engineer developmentally appropriate structures with limited materials. And here's an example. They'll read the book One Plastic Bag, and then they will brainstorm and plan and create products using plastic bags. And the student pictured there has created a jump rope out of a plastic bag. The other unit, kindergartners through second graders will participate in is Creature Feature. Think they will love this. They'll utilize skills developed during science, English, language arts, reading, and math as they travel the world from oceans to the African plains to learn about some of the world's most unique animals and habitats. And here's an example of some things that they can do with the turtle. Bringing in math and writing and reading, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. And in third through fifth grades, the units follow these influences of Hattie's. Creativity programs, integrated curriculum, mathematics problem-solving, outdoor and adventure programs, science lab programs, and STEM programs. And here's one of our units, Infinity and Beyond. So in this unit, students will research So in this unit, students will research, learn, and explore the solar system through English language, English language arts, reading, math, and science. Um, they'll explore different materials and resources to learn about the solar system, how it works. And we are bringing in the Fort Worth Astronomical Society. Um, they're going to bring in solar telescopes to all four campuses. And students will be able to view sunspots and spirals of gas activity on the sun. And I think they're going to absolutely love that. And then the other unit is called Cereal Celebration. This will be fun as well. Students are going to engage in math, English, language arts, reading, art, science, technology, and engineering to create and market a new cereal. Uh, they'll research nutritional information, practice writing advertisements and slogans, and use the boxes to discuss properties of 2D and 3D shapes. So that's just a little overview of what's going to be happening. Do you have any questions? Yes, Fred.
Ms. Clark, I have two. Um, refresh my memory, is this Monday through Thursday or Monday through Friday?
Monday through Thursday, yes.
And should a parent choose, can they pick them up at 11:50 instead of 12:10 before lunch?
I'm sure they can.
Okay, since lunch is the end of the day.
Yeah, they won't, that's just a sample schedule. They'll be, yeah, they'll be staggered lunches.
Got it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you so much.
7.07 Campus-wide surveys report, Ms. Allen.
Good evening. I will be, uh, very brief. So this report is, um, in response to, uh, some questions that you guys presented earlier this spring about, um, some campus-wide surveys and some issues that were going on in Fort Worth ISD. And then looking at maybe, um, trying to be a little proactive about, um, looking at our district. So this presentation is going to relate to Goal 5 and during relationships with stakeholders. And I'll preface this by saying Rhythm is spelled correctly here. It's a company. Somebody called me today and asked me if.
Someone called.
I did, that's my call me saying, you might want to check your PowerPoint. So in Fort Worth ISD, um, there was articles in the Star Telegram about parents opting their children out of these campus-wide surveys. So, um, looking into it, what, uh, Fort Worth ISD was using across their entire district was this program called Rhythm. And actually, um, as much information as I got about Rhythm, I never did find out why they chose to spell it incorrectly. So that'll just be a mystery for the ages. So, but what this app did is it had the students every day as they came in, they would go to the Rhythm app and there would be, um, a little emoji quiz where they would click how they felt for that day. And then in response, there was a short little three-minute video, um, that responded to their emotions. So maybe if they were feeling anxious that day, the, the video might have some grounding techniques where they, you know, five things you can see, four things you can hear, those kinds of skills. So it was, uh, the app was created by different psychologists and, um, educational psychologists in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. There was an overload on school counselors. They weren't able to get to students in time. So this was supposed to be a way to help students, um, learn some self-regulation. So where the parental concern actually came in though was the student data privacy. So after reading through the articles, um, parents were concerned that their student data was not being protected by this app. If you go to Rhythm's, um, privacy disclaimers, it states that they do share their student data with organizations of higher education. So I looked a little further into that. And so Rhythm is, because it's new, it's very, it was just created in response to the pandemic. So just the last few years, they're still measuring the efficacy of it. And so they've partnered with different universities and they're using that student data as, um, research, not admission. So they are sharing data with, uh, UNT is actually one of them. Um, but it's to look at the efficacy of the program. Is it working? Is it actually helping? How can we make it better? It's not, um, something that is, that universities are ever going to be looking at and saying, you know, Holly had a bunch of sad faces this one day. And that was one of the, that was one of the concerns of the parents. So that's not happening. It's just that research component. But we did, uh, this definitely sparked interest in knowing, you know, we should probably look further into what all is happening in our district. So after speaking to the elementary school principals and our secondary principals, we are really not, um, giving very many campus-wide surveys at all. Um, we obviously give the district-wide survey that we just, um, I think they just presented on it at the last school board meeting, two school board meetings ago. So we give that to our sixth, eighth, and 11th graders. We give it to the parents, the community, everybody else. We do, um, have some campus polls going on, but they're all through our Google products which are protected by our Google privacy that we have, um, the relationship with. And they're typically things like, um, Central Junior High, uh, voted for homecoming king and queen that way, I think. Hurst Junior High had, um, they were having a school event and they used it to vote on if they wanted pizza or chicken finger. So that, that kind of stuff is going on. Teachers are using it for classroom PDSA now that we're moving into this more, uh, technology for everything. So instead of our traditional plus deltas, we're doing a lot of, um, Google Form plus deltas. Very rarely, we will have, um, some out-of-district surveys. National surveys occasionally come about. We, um, sometimes get, uh, people wanting to do doctoral dissertations. I was one of those a few years ago. Um, but those, uh, all go through a very strict IRB process. And we only allow doctoral dissertations to, uh, current employees. It's never, uh, anybody who's outside of our district, so. Um, it was brought to my attention, um, towards the end of my research into this, that GoGuardian has recently added in, uh, very similar emoji quiz. However, uh, GoGuardian's privacy is, um, it's already in line with our person, our district expectations for privacy. They are not sharing data with any outside sources, uh, anything of that nature. Uh, and actually, some of the schools weren't even aware this happened. They, they learned about it when I called them and said, hey, are you using this? So Hurst Junior High, sorry, Yulis Junior High has a few teachers using it. The other schools, again, I, I kind of alerted them to, to the existence of this, so. One principal did say, oh, yeah, I'm going to share this. So, so that, but I did, again, like I said, I talked to, uh, some of the different people at Help Desk and some of the different people in our technology department. And we did double-check those privacy concerns and they're, they are not sharing our student data, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. 7.08 District Benchmark Assessment, Dr. Norgard.
For this report, I will be playing the role of myself. Um, okay, so I am bringing to you third through sixth grade math DBA data. Um, our reports got spread out a little bit so that I wasn't coming and talking to about eight tests all at once, but this was actually given a little bit ago because actually tomorrow, our third through eighth grade and algebra students will be taking their math STAR or EOC. So when I talk about the interventions, these have already happened. Um, and our students are set and ready to go, uh, tomorrow. So this, uh, report does have interim data about meets and masters grade level in alignment to our strategic plan. I do want to remind you about the new item types and that math had more than any of them. The very first DBA that I brought you last fall when I shared some of the new item types was math. There's 10, um, related in math. And we do feel like when we get into the data, I'm going to share a couple of specific examples. I do have, um, both Ms. Manning and Mrs. Adcox here tonight that we've been in consultation as, um, I was analyzing the data for you this evening about exactly where we think this is impacting. A reminder that DBA 1, when we talk about math, is not the full year of content. It's that first 12 weeks of school because there's so much, as opposed to ELAR where it's spiraling content that they just, uh, have simply not seen yet. So there's not always the same direct line from DBA 1 to DBA 2 as in other subjects. And that, um, from the 2021 school year, 2020, 2021 school year, we only have traditional students in the, um, year-to-year trend data. So we do test in both English and Spanish at third grade, but it's those combined results that we will carry forward to look. And you will see the first of many red arrows in the masters column. You will see all green arrows in approaches for this year's data on all these grade levels I'm going to report on. And in discussing with our math coordinators, when we look at these new item types, and if you may recall or may not, because a little time has passed since I first introduced the STAR redesign. The new guidance is no more than 75% of the points, not of the questions, but no more than 75% of the points can come from multiple choice items. And the others must come from these, um, new item types. Um, some may be two points, some may be one point. And as we're analyzing the data, we are finding in particular ones that we're seeing where the item type seems to be interfering. And of course, we'll deal, delve more deeply when we get the STAR data back. Is it content? Is it the item type? You know, where is really that greater impact? But in some of the two-point items like multi-select, um, match table grid, and the graphing that students have to do. You know, we've talked a lot, there is quite a difference between choosing A, B, C, or D and having to produce a number line. Or as they move up in math, I mean, they're doing linear equations and different things like that. It is really asking them to put forth more, um, show their thinking and express that. So when you think about hitting that masters level, we're still gaining ground at approaches. But to hit masters, our students have to master those new item types too because it's so much more of the test. So that is something that our coordinators are seeing. And you will see that in the plans that they, um, have implemented and, and shared with their teachers to prep, they have targeted that as well. So, but we do have green arrows, but masters is where you're going to see this impact. And we do believe this is the new item type, but we will, of course, we're very excited to get the actual data back from STAR so that we can try to disaggregate what we can. Um, these are the performance objective targets set based on last year's third-grade performance that didn't have any of these new item types. Um, but you can see historically, as we move across the third-grade year, that movement from DBA 1 to DBA 2 and then where our students end up performing at STAR. So tomorrow, when they take their tests, we have, um, high goals and expectations for our students. And we know that they have pushed themselves and their teachers have encouraged them uh, to be their best prepared version for that test tomorrow. Um, just a little bit of cohort history because our third graders, we just got them this year. So we actually, uh, the same, that even when we looked at last year, the drop at masters compared to last year's third graders for this group of third graders compared to how they did on DBA 1 in the fall when we were just introducing new item types versus this that now had, you know, many more of these item types incorporated. Um, while they grew at approaches and meets, there was that dip at masters. So it's just hitting us a little harder right there. In fourth grade, we have fewer students tested in Spanish, but it's the combined results that will carry forward. So we do see, um, a little bit of lost ground compared to last year's fourth graders with no new item types at both meets and masters. But again, it's that masters where we're seeing that greater, um, impact. That's where we're taking the hit right now. Um, these are the targets based on last year's fourth graders with no new item types. And you can see, uh, the pattern here. Um, we see a little more that, um, dip with DBA 1 not being a full comprehensive test. And so we've dropped back down, but we, um, will rebound. Because like, if you look at the 2021 year, that's actually pretty typical, the down, up, down, or up, down, up, sorry, let me get those in the right order, um, for our students. And we can look at the performance for these students. You can see when you look back to the last dots before that vertical line, this is same group of students where they ended in third grade and where the targets are set for them to be at the end of fourth grade. So pretty consistent performance. But again, we'll have those new item types and we'll have to see how that, um, compounds the performance. So in fifth grade, some students testing in Spanish, but we'll look at the combined results. Again, um, we're, we're gaining ground, that incremental at approaches, but the new item types are hitting us at meets and really most often at masters. Um, the targets and our progress over several years. And for this group of students, we have quite a bit of, um, history for them in testing. And so we've seen, you know, just a very slow incremental gain in that purple line, the approaches, but a little bit up and down with our meets and masters. So we're looking at that impact of problem types. For sixth grade, they all test in English. We see, um, again, the only red is at masters. It's hitting us, uh, harder there. Um, the down and up and down, we're going to, no, up and down and up. I'm going to get those in the right order for you because the only way is up tomorrow. We are, um, looking forward to that gain because we can see for these students the kinds of gains that they have made across their fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade year. So what have we done? And I'm using past tense because we took this DBA data, our math coordinators and their facilitators, um, really worked to target curriculum specifically about this DBA data. Not just, here's what we think the problem is, looking at this DBA data. And then they're providing these, and then teachers can look because while our coordinators are building based on the district data, that will match almost every teacher. But some teacher might say, oh, well, you wrote a lesson about this. My students were fine. And they can, um, look at the lessons that are most aligned to what their classroom data says. So in grades three through five, these reviews feature many lessons focused on high-leverage TEACs. Because when you really analyze these, while an individual TEAC may, um, be in reference to fractions, you may see another item from STAR that is coded. It says it's a measurement problem, but if they had to measure using fractions, if we get them stronger in fractions, they're going to do well on the fractions TEAC and a measurement TEAC that has fractions. So really looking for, where can I get, wow, with these few skills, students could get 10 more questions correctly if I can really target these high-leverage skills. Um, the problem of the day, which they, um, have surprisingly every day, um, a problem of the day. Those, these are written in the new test format. So they're, again, looking at those new item types, getting familiar with that. And that small group practice where our teachers are looking, they have opportunities that have been written by our elementary math department. And they're picking out who needs which pieces. I'm pulling you to work on this. I'm pulling you to work on this. This is something our whole class needs. And then additionally, in sixth grade, um, they have built some, uh, practice in the Cambium platform directed by, um, TEACs based on that data. Go in, practice this, or have students look at this item and let's think about it this way. Not just looking at the question, but what else do we know about this? How else can we push or extend that thinking? Because again, it's what thinking are they producing? Not just giving a, you know, A, B, C, D answer. Um, last year, um, our sixth grade math, or secondary math, so sixth through ninth grade, I mentioned when I reported on the junior high DBA's, the Blitz. We call it the Lohman Blitz. Lohman was the presenter. His first name is escaping me right now, but, um, wrote that in. But it's even been tweaked based on this year's DBA data. So questions about our exciting math STAR for tomorrow?
Okay, thank you, Holly. All right, moving down to, um, regular board agenda items. 8.01 Annual Review and Approval of Investment Policy and Strategy. Did anyone have any questions? 8.02 Qualified Brokers for Investment Transactions, any questions? Investment Officer Training Sources? Questions? Doby, do you have anything? Oh, he's after. 8.04 Financial Statements for the Month of March.
Okay, we have the March 31st financial statements to review with the board. For the general fund, we have a fund balance of 237, 188, 640 that represents revenues over expenditures of $75,561,275. As I've been stating in the last meetings, we, uh, continue to do well with investment interest. As of March 31st, we were looking at $3,020,678 as compared to the same time period last year of $174,000.
That's amazing. That made me go look at my 401K when I saw that. I was like, ew, goodness.
Yeah, it's, I, I, it's just when you like having a, a pretty, uh, healthy fund balance because we're, we're, uh, reaping some benefits from that. So, uh, total expenditures to date, uh, or as of 3/31, we're at 54.7. And as you can see, uh, at seven-tweltths of our year, that's, uh, that's below the 58% for seven-tweltths. Uh, so the fund is doing as we expect. The Wrestler Report, um, payroll, of course, is our, our biggest expenditure at, currently running at 86%. Uh, that's $96,829,594 as of the end of March. Utilities, second largest expense at 2%, is running $2,418,551. And then the third largest expense, uh, is our instructional, or are our instructional supplies of $1,591,781, and that's at 1%. Child Nutrition Fund, fund balance of $10,359,375. That's revenues over expenditures of $1,952,397. Uh, that department, uh, just like a broken record. Now you just keep doing, keep on doing. They're, they're doing a great job, uh, and unfortunately, they're still. And unfortunately, they're still running about 30, I think around 32 people short of where they normally are. And we just, we don't have an answer for that, other than it's just, I think that hits all job categories for that type of work, so.
Mr. Williams, can you remind me, is there a plan to spend some of this down for the summer?
Yes, yes.
We may have talked about it.
I think, was it last month, we brought some, like a close to $5 million worth of expenditures for changing out equipment, lots of various pieces of equipment, a whole lot of stuff. Because yes, she's needing to spend down a lot of the fund balance, because as you know, TDA will, they will ding us if we have too much in reserve, so that's what she is doing. So that'll get, that'll get put in this summer, and we should be in good shape. As I said, expenditures are at 35.7, so well below the seven twelfths of a year. And that, as I said, that budget is doing extremely well. The debt service fund, fund balance of $52,647,599. That's revenues over expenditures of $36,382,733. That to the investment interest in that account, we're looking at $752,273 as compared to the same time period last year of only $19,069. So substantial increase in interest revenue. Of course, our February debt payment has already been made, and our second debt payment will be made before August 15. And as I've mentioned before, we just, I've been emailing our bond attorneys back and forth, and we are, they are running, doing runs right now on the bonds that we need to defees with the $5 million that we talked about doing, and we will get that done probably in the month of July to try to hang on to that $5 million bucks as long as we can before the end of our fiscal year, make a little more interest. But I will say, the numbers I looked at today, look like we would save about $239,000 in interest by defusing those $5 million worth of bonds, so that's always a bonus. Pre-K/CK fund, fund balance of 436, 537. That's revenues over expenditures of 351,114. As of the end of March, we had received 95.38% of our budgeted revenue, so almost all the way home there. As of 3/31, we were sitting at 57.64% of the budget expended, but like I say, we are at the end of the year, so we're in really good shape there. And that program also is performing as expected. Special revenue funds, those funds as of 3/31 are at 38.66% of budget, but as you know, those are multiple-year funds, so that number is really quite low compared to the other budgets. But that fund is doing as it should. Our overall expenditures do tend to lag because of the TEA, the way the draw system works with TEA on those funds. But it's tracking as expected. Campus activity fund, $3,615,188 in fund balance, that's revenue over expenditures of 841,451. That fund is doing, is doing well also. Kittles are making their money, and they're spending a little bit of it. 2018 bond fund, bond balance of $16,966,21. That represents expenditures over revenue of $7,483,716 as of the end of March. As you know, I say every month that we don't, unless we have bonds to sell, that fund does not grow in revenue, other than the interest earnings, which it too is earning a little bit of interest as are the other funds, so. And the majority of those funds are, like I said, are being used on the Bel Air rebuild, and technology still holding on to and has some budget expenditures out of that 2018 bond fund as well. The possible bond series, 2024. That has a balance of 717,932. Of course, we have no revenue for that source yet. Hopefully, that will change come November. The, that's really about it for that fund. Those funds will be, we will be able to recoup those funds once the bond passes. And the locally defined capital projects fund, fund balance of $57,493,960. That too represents expenditures over revenue of $1,299,860. Those funds are currently being used for the other half roughly of Bel Air Elementary and finishing up the admin annex remodel behind us. I decided this month, we needed to officially change the name of that. It's no longer the transition buildings. Safety and security additions, as you've seen several of those come through, and then the Trinity and LD Bell baseball softball reveals, purchase of new property, and a few other projects. And as, and some of these projects that we discussed at the facilities meeting are also here too, so. And I think that's it, unless you have some questions.
Thank you, sir. All right. 8.05, budget transfer and amendment request for consideration in May 2023. Any questions for Dobie?
The only thing of significance here, most of these budget transfers are just normal in nature, not very big, except for that fourth column. You can see, that's a $6 million transfer out of fund balance. That is to cover the safety and security expenditures that was also talked about, so that we can put that into the locally defined fund, so we can keep that fund where it needs to be.
Thank you. Contract, 8.06, contract between HEB ISD and Community and Schools CIS of Greater Tarrant County, Inc. Mr. Streeter?
The contract is almost identical to what we used for last year. It's the exact same number of workers that we'll be having, 11 and 2, and the price is only slightly more, just because of an increase in salaries. Pending any questions? Thank you.
8.07, 2023-2024 E-Star renewal agreement. Any questions? 8.08, RFP number 22-22B for contracted therapy service for special education. Any questions? 8.09, amendment number 7 to AIA B 102-2007, standard form of agreement between owner and architect. Any questions? 8.10, job order.
Job.
Job order, HEB ISD 2023-03 for turf renovations at five junior high schools and Trinity High School Eastfield. Mr. Minor.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to make a clarification. On there, it says that it's five junior highs plus Trinity. On the quote, if you look into your supporting documentation, the quote says five junior highs, but if you drill down below that, it's actually four junior highs plus Trinity's field. Reason for that too is, in the beginning, when we started doing the development process, we were looking at all five, and the reason was, was to recoup our football fields after having to practice on those over the past few years with the last bond. At Central, it's a little bit different. They have a practice field that we have fenced off, they have plenty of other fields to go to. So when we looked at that, there's not as much damage on that field, we can recoup that. So we had that pulled. So on the quote, it was a little misleading.
So it'll be four junior highs and Trinity?
Yes, four junior highs and Trinity's field.
So when we change it, when we vote on it next meeting, it should be corrected by that property.
Yep.
And what is the status of Bell's field? Are they gonna need something in the near future, or they just?
Their practice field has been fine. It's, we, it took some damage to the Trinity's practice field for a number of reasons. Everything from the ice, I got a picture that shows it looks like a hockey rink, and so that one, whereas Bell's was draining fine, we didn't have the same kind of ice damage. Also, we had some people, if you've been over there recently, you'll see that there's a rail fence. We had some people getting out there, participating in some off-roading events, and so we had to make some repairs.
Some off-roading events. Nice. Okay. Any other questions? 8.11, updated purchasing cooperative agreements. Any questions? 8.12, RFP number 22-14B administrative and instructional contracted educational services. Any questions? Moving down to action items, 9.01, consider of approval to update 2023-2024 staffing table, new units, Ms. Tuttle?
These are six teacher assistant units for special education, as well as a dyslexia teacher unit, also from special ed.
Okay. If there's no questions, I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the new units as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the new units as submitted. That motion passes. 9.02, consider approval of chapter 21 contracts, Ms. Tuttle?
We have three additional contracts tonight. One is an existing teacher, and two are individuals who were initially approved as teacher coaches on your last contract listing, but have actually been moved to teaching positions by their choice, and in order for us to provide them the correct contract, we needed to bring them back to you. Any questions?
I'll accept a motion.
I move that the board approve the chapter 21 contracts as presented. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the chapter 21 contracts as presented. And that motion passes. 9.03, consider approval of supplemental duty changes in critical shortage areas to be included in the 2023-2024 supplemental duty schedule, Ms. Tuttle?
So I shared with you in the Friday update that we have two particular areas. We'll be bringing supplemental duty schedule to you in June with our comprehensive changes, but there were two specific areas that we're really feeling that we need to get out there and communicate about, because they happen to be the area that we're, the areas that we're having the most turnover in. And so we are asking permission from you not to compensate anyone with these stipends, because that would not occur till August, but to be able to communicate as we're interviewing for these two employee groups, and to be able to communicate to any of the individuals in these employee groups who might have already submitted a resignation, but may want the opportunity to consider staying. Questions?
So how are you communicate, with approval of this, how would you communicate that this, would be it upon approval?
Yes, yes, it would be proposed, and we have a communication that we would use for interviews, and then one that we could share with the existing staff in these two areas.
Any other questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the supplemental duty changes in critical shortage areas as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the board approve the supplemental duty changes in critical shortage areas as presented. And that motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Tuttle. 9.04, consider approval of donations for the May regular board meeting presentation of certificates of appreciation. Any questions?
I move the board approve the May 2023 donations as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the board approve the May 2023 donations as presented. And that passes. Moving down to other business, 10.01, the opportunity for board members to request items to be placed on future board agendas. 10.02, review board activity chart. It looks like everything is covered except the lead HEB reception for the 22-23 cadre on May 18th from 4:30 to 5:30. Julie, you're not able to attend? Is that, was, oh, wait.
What's the date?
May 18th.
No, I'm out of town.
Okay.
I can do it.
Looks like we have everything else where at least two of us are there, so that's good. 10.03, plus delta for the employee banquet 2023.
Okay, and so if we can take out our sticky notes, and plus delta, our employee banquet, and then I will collect those, and we'll review those tonight.
I thought it was all a plus.
Well attended, and the food was good, I do believe.
Food was good.
Yeah, I think they have a new chef, and I've noticed, a noticeable upgrade. Again, food and decorations, fun, great energy. Love the music again. The old guys are, they're fun. Plus Jeff. Anytime Dr. Burnett is emceeing, it's gonna be great. Would love to have Lisa stand behind the table, okay.
Just at this in the past, and I know we're limited in how deep the stage is, but I do believe there's enough room to just move that table up about three feet, so that there's enough room for her to stand behind. It's uncomfortable for her, or whoever is handing that, because the, the people get confused that they're supposed to stop at her.
Where?
But if she were behind the table, that would never happen.
It's true.
Okay. And then, guys, I will say this, and let's maybe make a point of this. Some of the suggestions maybe we've made in the past, please make them again, because while we document this, it's not something that is easy for us to pull up, and so we're not seeing historic plus deltas as we're looking through. So if there's anything, you're like, well, you know, look, go ahead and give it to us every time, every, everyone you have.
Whoever currently is going to plan it, you can like just save those
We do.
To give to that person.
But historically, some of that data, though it was compiled, we don't have. And so we're gonna try and save it, but that's one of the things we do. As soon as we start working on the next year, we pull up what we have.
Okay, I got you.
And so we do wanna make sure we have everything. All right, thank you very much.
Open forum two? Okay. I'll accept a motion to, oh, do we have another closed session?
No.
No. Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I did pretty good for my first.